I talked to Butch about it. I understand why it's.
Oh, it's just us yet.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me get on there.
It is six o'clock by the town clock. So we'd like to call to order the regular hybrid meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for September 21st, 2023. Do you have any other updates to the agenda?
Um, I do. We just, we have the email from the law offices of Warren Ruplansky, which you guys received about noon today. Um, and then we also extremely late, I did send you an email from a neighbor and that's, she's being represented by this lawyer, but it was, yeah, you got it. That's it.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so in the communications and announcements, we have an email from Jay Jacko regarding the Woodstock National LLC. We have the scenic overlay documents response request from Laura Ricky. We have an email, Dee Telsin regarding the McGee Maggot SPR. We have a letter from Goldman regarding the McGee Maggot SPR. And we have a letter from Chief Frank Athens regarding McGee Maggot SPR. So today we have one public hearing and two sketch plan reviews.
You want to first the minutes because he's not here.
Yeah, so wait just a minute. Make sure it's 6:05.
Do the minutes from September 7th?
The minutes, yes. If everybody's okay, I'd like to adopt the minutes from September 7th.
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Thank you. We're not talking today. Oh, he's here, come on.
Oh, okay.
We're waiting on you. Have a seat. No worries. I looked quick and I didn't see you.
Okay. We're a minute early, but we'll be there when we get through this.
We will.
So this is a public hearing for Sharon McGee and Lyle Maggot, SPR case number 23-0373A and SUP number 23-0539A. This is a public hearing for a site plan review and special use permit applications to convert a multiple family into a mixed-use residence in the HR zoning listed located at 18 Maple Lane in Woodstock. So if you would... Okay, I'd like to make the motion to open the public hearing. Anything mentioned? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so...
I spoke to Butch this afternoon and he explained to me that the terminology is probably not quite exactly right.
I would agree with that.
It's probably mixed residential use.
Well, hold on. Let the app just please tell the board what it is that you're proposing.
So basically, two apartments, my primary residence and the other side, so two apartments and rooms are also for like rental and you have like apartment rental planning for a long time, from like 2006. And the idea is to do like more like renting, like some for short lived towns and do some kind of retreats and enjoy the...
Okay, so it's a mixed, you apply for a mixed use.
Yes.
What are the two, what's the use, the mixed use?
The use will be like for, my idea is to do some retreats and we love to get some room for like meditation, some relaxation and some also like the chance of people to come in town and enjoy the...
Okay, I still don't have an actual use. Do I put in the use tables?
What do you mean?
Well, is it a hotel? Is it a short-term rental?
We love to do a hotel, but you know, like because we're leaving and it's because the size of the place is very small. I really definitely think that a breakfast will be the best thing and it's what we agree with, with Butch.
But bed and breakfast is already permitted.
Yes.
Right. I mean, you, you can have an owner occupied short-term rental. You don't have to come, I mean, that's...
Well, if it's a short-term rental, then it would be subject to the cap and it's a bed and breakfast.
No, that was non-owner, if it's owner occupied.
It's still under the cap. It's a short-term rental. If it's a bed and breakfast, then it's not a problem.
Because it prompts the mixed use requires a site, a special use permit.
Because it's a mixed use, because they are living there and the two rooms are a bed and breakfast. I don't know why that's considered a mixed use instead of just calling it a bed and breakfast because in a bed and breakfast, most are living there.
That's, that's permitted, a bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure. I'm not sure, the referral doesn't, wording doesn't make sense. The actual referral is for something I've never heard.
The wording does not make sense. What Butch said to me was, it is mixed residential use.
All right, but I need to know the use, whether it's in the use table or not. A bed and breakfast is a use and that's permitted. You don't need a special use permit for that. You just go to the building department and they set you up for an annual inspection.
I don't know, I don't know why he thought we needed to rule on it.
Well, I just don't have a definition for the mixed use. One part of it is, he's gonna live there and the other part, he wants to rent some rooms.
As a bed and breakfast.
As a bed and breakfast, which is permitted.
Yeah.
And then just go to the building department and you apply for, and they set you up with that. Doesn't get a special use permit. It's just, it's a light building.
So you don't need it, I mean, I could look at, I could look at the code, but...
So what about the events? Do the events, is that a different use?
What event?
His retreats.
The retreats.
Well, I think there's a, in the use table, there may be a retreat. I don't ever remember coming across it.
Well, I rented a house for a retreat last summer and it was really just a matter that we had some, we had some workshops there and we assumed reading from there and there were two people staying in rooms there. And that was a permitted, non-owner occupied house. But that was under the STR, which is not exactly the same thing. It may be oddly, I mean, the STR committee ought to look at hotel models.
We can always go back to Butch. We can always, what you just said, I can put that in a letter and ask him back and hold on this. You know, if, if owner occupied bed and breakfast is permitted, not quite seat. We don't understand why it's a special use permit.
Oh, I know why, because it was a long-term rental before, so it is a change of use.
But that's the most, that makes sense.
It was a multi-family rental and now...
That's still a residence.
But it's still a residence.
It's not a change of use. Somebody's living there. It's not like a motorcycle garage. That's a change of use.
You guys told me.
I mean, the thing is, it would require a site plan if it was for events and you'd have to have parking and you'd, we'd have to look at a site plan.
Well, we did, there is a site plan. He did set two applications. We did a site visit.
For this?
Greg and Jennifer went and checked the parking. But it was basically parking for the retreats and bed and breakfast for two apartments. That was basically what we...
The retreat doesn't change the volume of people. I'm not going to get like 20 or 15 people, like basically. The retreat will be also like at the distemper, the people who stay in my house is only like for two, four, six guests and...
So you're not actually having the retreat at your house?
No.
You're just housing some people who are there for a retreat at another facility?
Yes.
I don't even think you want to bring that word in. It's not really relevant. We're gonna have guests in that.
It's not like, I don't, I don't mean like I'm going to get 15 or 20 people, you know, like that.
You'll get what you normally would have.
So Greg, when you took a look at it, because what we're concerned about is parking on Maple Lane in Portland, blocking out Maple Lane. Is there enough parking?
We determined that there's room, enough room for parking based on the number of rooms that they have. There, there's potential to add parking, more parking. But we didn't take into account retreats, but it sounds like you're...
Yeah, no, but because I only need like three, four, you know, and I do have that on my plan site.
But the retreat is not actually taking place at your property, if I understand what you're saying. You're housing people who are coming in for that.
No, they sleep overnight, they relax, they meditate.
So Leo, what her question is, is um, say a retreat has 15 people, so we're not, they're, they're, you're helping, giving them accommodations to stay overnight. They're not going to be hanging and having an actual retreat. They're going to be elsewhere, right?
Yeah.
Like, so you're not giving an agenda of what she's anticipating is you would mass invite 100 people?
No way.
Okay, but that's like, so a retreat, we have scheduled from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So many people are invited and we have accommodations for, for four. Do you know what I mean? Like that are available if you want. But most of, if this retreat that you're talking about isn't necessarily on the premises, you're, that's elsewhere. You just want to be available for people who come to retreats in Woodstock. Is that correct?
So it's still a bed and breakfast?
Yeah. With the limits in size that we have identified, two people per bedroom.
I'm fine with a bed and breakfast. I don't need, I don't need to have that.
There's just a little mix up with the, how it's being labeled and we're just trying to iron it all out.
Terminology problem.
So we're just trying to figure out exactly terminology and what we're looking to do.
Right, because owner occupied bed and breakfast is permitted.
But it is a change of use from a multiple apartment house to a bed and breakfast.
Right, but everybody else that has it, you just go to the building department and you, and you go, you get an annual inspection, a fire inspection, they have to go and see you.
So we don't really need to do anything after this.
Can I ask a question about the bed and breakfast?
Absolutely.
I think there was a case before us a while ago about a bed and breakfast and are you technically serving breakfast?
I give like, we do have like coffee. I deliver a coffee and if I can also do like the French bain-mariezé. But also we are, we are very close to bed and, to bed alone, so you know.
So my question is, I thought we had found something in the language of motels and bed and breakfast that to be a bed and breakfast, you actually have to serve breakfast or you're not...
We do, we do have coffee and everything in the spot and the area where we can do that, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up because that wasn't, it came up.
Yeah, we've had that discussion before and to serve a bagel, that's a good deal.
I think when we were there, didn't he tell us that, I think you told us you served them food. I think you said, right?
Specialty.
John is looking like he wants to say something.
Yeah, I, yeah, I kind of object to members of the board literally putting words in his mouth. And I would like very much to just hear what he has to say regarding his use. Not maybe this, or maybe we can serve breakfast. What do you intend to do?
Well, basically, I would love to do like this building where we will get some very nice purging and alcaline menu and dinner. So basically, it's only like a vegetarian and recreate acidity, like bringing it up to an alcaline menu and do some beautiful retreat with that. The Lama Karma will be involved with my retreat. So this will be based maybe at the temple. And the bed and breakfast offer the people to come to my place, relax, have a bed and breakfast and have like a breakfast in the morning and just enjoy their time and meditate and be like very happy with their, with their weekend.
All great ideas. I don't know if this is the right place for it and that's my concern.
In Woodstock, I think it would be like a fabulous.
Well, we, this, Woodstock's broken up into many different zones and uses and that's what I'm concerned is that we just keep on expanding the uses in some of these and which is really over the last couple of years has gotten to the point of being out of control from the town.
But let's not forget that I've been here from 2006 and...
50 years before that I was here. It's okay. I understand. I understand. 2006 for me is yesterday.
Well, of course, I understand.
So I think the question we're down to is the use.
Yes, it is.
That might be actually a little...
Because I'm just confused what we've...
That was residential.
I think we're confused on what are we permitting? What are we permitting?
I love to do a bed and breakfast, you know, like people, they don't have to be only for my retreat. They can be there also for like enjoying the weekend. It's not only if I give option to everybody and, and offer some service. If I have to, I was just talking about the service I can offer. But of course, if people want to, let's say in film festival, they want to be involved with that, I will be very happy to get this guest in my place.
Let me ask the board, would you all rather get a better description from the building inspector as to what we're actually doing or are you comfortable with the language the way it is? I've never seen an application for mixed use before, so it's...
What Butch told me is it's kind of the language they use around the office. And it's not in the zoning code as that, but it is mixed residential in his definition. That's what he said. That it's a B and B.
It's...
I don't know.
Owner occupied.
The only thing that I see that it's our, our business is that it's a change from a multiple, an apartment house.
Multi-dwelling.
Multi-dwelling to a bed and breakfast. I don't even know what makes it mixed use. A bed and breakfast requires the owners to live on the property.
Right, and that you just get a, go to the building department for it. It doesn't get a special use.
So I don't know the answer to the question.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Not yet. Not yet.
Don, what do you feel?
Clarification from Butch is what's going to be written in this.
James, what do you think? You want to, want us to go back to Butch?
We can't hear you. You gotta unmute yourself.
Sorry, I can never find the muted button. I'm sorry. I, I actually, that recent letter that got sent did kind of confuse me. I don't know if that's something that we're bearing in our discussion right now, but it, it seems like there's something unclear about the use of this property and I just think it, I actually just think we should have something a little bit more straightforward as to what, what it's changing to and from and, and again, I would actually pursue this question of the bed and breakfast and I think the reason for that is because of the, the whole sort of gray area going on with, are we doing a short-term rental or are you actually a bed and breakfast or are you actually a motel? And there's very clear laws saying what you are. And for you to come to us and get our blessing for that, I think we need to really be clear that you, you are actually serving food every morning as a bed and breakfast.
James, the only problem with that is we don't have food police, do we? We don't really know whether or not there's food being served every morning. We don't know that.
Well, we talked to this one, I wish I could remember the case and it was something about how the business was set up. I mean, I think you advertise something and you should deliver it, so I, I'd like to actually revisit what that language was. I mean, unless this whole thing is just like, okay, it's, it's fine to just have some short-term rentals here, but I think that that's probably the issue that people are, you know, getting kind of aggravated about is how this is being put forward to everybody.
Well, I'd like to make the suggestion that we hear from the public and we recess to the call of the chair and consult with Butch. You know, the public hearing can be reconvened.
But we took care of the public part.
But in the meantime, we'll get a better understanding from Butch of how he sees it. There's no reason why the people who came out can't speak. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, please, if anybody from the public would have a comment, please give me...
Do you agree with...
Yes, I absolutely agree with you.
We're gonna go, okay. Board, sounds like a plan?
Sure.
Okay, now.
So everybody from the public, please give your name to Melissa and Steve.
Hi, I'm a contiguous property owner. I'm right across the street from...
From your neighbors?
Eileen McNally. So my home is directly across the street from their driveway. Maple Lane is 15 feet in width across. When they built their pool house, the building permit was given illegally. There was no referral to the...
In your opinion?
Board. Oh, no, according to the zoning laws. It's not my opinion. I'm quoting zoning laws.
Did it was defined, someone, was there an adjudication that determined it was illegal?
Whenever there is a structure built on a property that's larger than the original home, there's a requirement that the building department...
Is that brought to the building department's attention?
Oh, yes. Ellen lied to me. So the secretary at the time, she said all they need for a building permit is 25 feet from the rear of the structure to the back property line and 15 feet from the sides. At that time, I had not gotten a hold of the zoning laws and left extremely confused because contractors actually threatened that they would damage the vehicles parked right in front of my house because there was no room in order for the contractors to get massive timber frames, the giant pool, onto their property without utilizing the space in front of my house. I had to get my son to school, so I was concerned about my vehicles being damaged, so I complied. I had no idea that they were going to open up a nightclub and event space, you know, in this pool house that was constructed for private use. That's what it says on the, on the building applications. It's residential pool, you know, for, for private use, but they opened up full on in a commercial sense.
What year was this?
Around 2009, 2010, so yeah. But I've been dealing with this for 15 years. Jeremy Wilber, subsequently, you know, when he became building, when he became the supervisor again, knows my neighbor, another resident on the street and another property owner on the street, Dorothy Telsin, and he helped us. He ordered Ellen and the building department to take them to court to cease those operations. So they did go to court and this is in, all this paperwork is in the brief or the company is the letter from the lawyer who I retained. So they were taken to court by Timothy Keefe to cease those operations. However, they didn't refer to them as, you know, stop your nightclub, stop your event space. It was just stop your health spa facility. So they completely toned it down, which was great and it's been nice. But they've been operating without a special use permit for 15 years. And also in the zoning laws, it states, in order to get an operating permit, you first have to have a special use permit. So Ellen was the, you know, embodiment of this special use permit for them. She protected them for 15 years.
Ellen, Ellen?
Ellen Caciara, who recently retired, the building inspector.
Who was the building inspector?
Correct, correct. She protected them for 15 years. So here we are with this illegal approach to attach commercial, commercial usage to their property with the term mixed use. So mixed use and mixed occupancy are synonymous. In the law, it doesn't mention mixed use. What it does mention is mixed occupancy. That's the legal term, however. Mixed use is just another way to describe it, but it doesn't appear on paper. So this application for, to convert this property to mixed use is a very clever way to, you know, attempt to attach commercial applications to a Hamlet residential plot. So the Hamlet residential plots need to be preserved as such. You know, there's a homelessness crisis. Housing is at a premium. I implore the board not to, you know, further destroy places for people to live. My home is 750 square feet. That's, that, that's the size of it. I own that home since 2004 and I brought my son up in that house. I've lost so much sleep because of this activity until Jeremy shut it down. I have many, many concerns about this. The language is illegal. Please read the letter that the lawyer who I retained wrote. Please read my letter. I, I have the law to give to you regarding mixed occupancy.
Okay, but let me, let me just hold you there a minute because we know the code.
Okay.
But you have to understand that anything, this referred to us, is referred to us by the ZBA. The ZBA determines what you're...
The building inspector.
Building inspector.
And so I've been...
Zoning and torson.
I went to speak to Butch and I, and I showed him, you know, I said, Butch, there's no mixed use choice available on the code. And while I'm speaking, I do want to mention that bed and breakfast does require a special use permit. It's here on the chart.
Correct.
So I said to Butch, there is no mixed use choice. You know, this is something that has been, you know, demarcated to properties sometime 70s, 80s. Either you're commercial, you're mixed use, or you are residential, you know, and that's it. And there are boundary lines because people need to live. There's no mixing and matching here. I have this code here to, to provide to you among other, other documents. Here's the operating permit. Look, look in the town code. This, this is incorrect to have an operating permit without a special use permit. It is against the law.
Okay, I just want to remind you and everybody else in the audience that we have nothing to do with enforcement. And when you have complaints about any activity or business or anything, you have to take that to the building department. They're the only ones that have enforcement. And you can complain to the planning board, but we don't have the ability to change the law.
I, yes, thank you, Mr. Cross. I understand that we live in upstate New York and we are living like it's still colonial times, you know, like it's 1775, you know, and the British are in charge and we are policing ourselves. That's what it's like. There's no oversight. This is a huge, huge problem in upstate New York. So this is why Ellen was allowed to, you know, create her very own coup in Woodstock by wielding power, by protecting her friends for 15 years. I cannot go to the building. I already went to the building department and I said...
But they're the ones that have to make the, the change, not us.
The change to what?
If there's something, if it's done illegally, they are the ones that can stop it. They can do a cease and desist, order a remedy. That's from the building department. We can't do it.
And I would like to have a very nice, clear communication pathway with Butch. And I would like this to be, you know, this experience with this, you know, application to convert to mixed use to be a learning experience for the entire community, the building department involved as well. So... Uh as well, um, so, um. The building department created the wording. So I can't, I've, I've already attempted to discuss this with um the building department and um. You know, luckily I was able to find some legal counsel. You know, luckily I was able to take days off of work to deal with this and to make all the copies. And to do all this research and to email people and just really, you know, look into what is mixed use and.
So you, you've heard the board's decision. We're actually gonna send it back to the ZBA to get clarification.
CEO.
Yeah, this um application to convert. Uh, to mixed use is illegal.
Okay, but we, that.
It's not a determination we can make. We understand what you're saying. But it's, as Peter said, we're not. We're not enforcers. We're here to interpret the planning, the, the law, the zoning law, that's.
Um, may I submit the law that states?
I, I, I read what you said. I, we got it.
Thank you for reading.
I did, I read it.
I think there were two different issues here. One is that the terminology of the application does not fit the law.
Say that again, please.
The terminology that was used in the application does not fit the law. There's no such category as mixing.
Correct.
So the application has to address things that are actually in the code that are permitted.
That makes sense.
Now, we know that a bed and breakfast has to have a special use permit and is permitted in that district with a special use permit. The question then becomes, what is a bed and breakfast? Are things that have been going on, on the property in excess of what a bed and breakfast would be permitted to do? Is there enforcement? Those are big questions, and they're questions not just for this case. But we have new, a new sheriff in town.
I think we, we hear everyone else. All these points, we're gonna put them together and put them in a note to Bush.
So has this been retracted? Has the wording of this?
Has not been retracted.
Okay.
It was explained to me what it meant, but I can certainly see that the language of the application is not a possible language. So that is, has to be fixed.
He has a point.
That has to be fixed. And we have to see whether there is a permissible use that is in our code, which we are not able to say yet because that's something we have to consult.
Well, that would be bed and breakfast. They have applied for bed and breakfast in the past, actually in twenty twelve, but have um. Taken that back because they really want to operate commercially, and if they were a bed and breakfast, it would hamper that. But now, you know, after, um, you know, I, I spoke with Butch and said, there's no such thing as a mixed use um SUP. And I've had to hire counsel and I wrote my letter. Now, all of a sudden, they want to be a bed and breakfast again. That's very nice and I appreciate that. I'm very concerned about the events.
I understand what you're saying. I think we all understand what you're saying.
Commercial thing, but this is very nice that um bed and breakfast is acceptable to them all of a sudden after. After all the work that I've put in to this.
Okay, let's uh, let's hear from other members of the public that came here. Is there anybody else from the public here for this case?
Hi, um, Derek Wong. And I'm here as a member of the community other than Derek though. And I'm just recently learning about this particular uh application. Um, and I, as you know, I've been working on zoning law and housing. And also hearing a lot of people in the community about concerns about how we address. Uh, the, the needs of uh to provide housing to, to, to meet the needs of the community. My, um, what I'm confused about here is that um bed and breakfast is permitted. In a residential district with a special use permit. Otherwise, it's not. Um, it's, it's, non-residential uses are not permitted. So it's a residential district. In Hammond residential, so if it is a mixed commercial and residential use, that wouldn't be permitted. But I think there is a lot of confusion about this particular application in terms of what the intent. Of the applicant is, what the history is, what they can act, are actually looking to provide. And I'm not sure whether this lanes in the building department ultimately comes back to you because a special use permit would come back to you. That um there needs to be clarity around what is happening at the site. And what is intended to happen at the site. Um, because we have uh, we have a housing crisis. And I think we need to be mindful to not set uh precedence. Um, with all due respect to um the code enforcement officer, there are some things that are gray areas. I think the community needs to move those as well. But um I think we really need to do what we can to maintain the integrity of the laws that we do have. And then improve them to help uh meet our, our stated goals. For having uh uh housing and we have a vibrant commercial area. And, you know, there are many different ways that people live in the community and I just think there's um, it just. Um, it just feels to me that we have to be very careful about not going down a route that sets a precedent. Uh, that we want to be trying to avoid.
Okay. That's exactly why we want to get clarification.
Yeah, I think it's critical.
Is there anybody else on this case? Okay, so is uh.
Please, Ellen, let me understand, please. You want clarification about the wording of the um SUP? Thing as it stands now?
No.
Okay, when I spoke with Butch, he said, okay, um, this, I want to do this, but it will only apply to two apartments. And um, I mean, I tried to have a discussion with him about this, that, you know, if, if, if they do this. There's no wording that says it will apply to two apartments. It doesn't make sense anyway if they approve of.
Okay, I mean, that's basically why it's being kicked back. They're asking Butch to give them more information.
But I'd like to point out that in the past, we have set constraints on.
Condition.
I'm thinking in particular of Catskill, of Woodstock Farm Sanctuary. We said, you can't do this kind of thing. You can't do that kind of thing. You can only do this on one particular date. You can't get buses and they can't stop on the highway. We can do that. If we define a bed and breakfast. Then a bed and breakfast is not a place, it's not a nightclub. We would need to define what the limits of appropriate use in that property are in our resolution. I think it's, it seems to me that it is clear that to convert a multiple residence to a bed and breakfast. Is something that we need an SUP for, but SUPs mean that we can set limits. And if things have been going on without permission in the past, that doesn't mean they should be permitted to continue.
Well, my only comment from that is, you're correct, they should not be permitted to continue. And where have we seen the enforcement? That's nonexistent.
That is a problem in the town in general, but we can only do what we can do. And what we can do is say, if you do these things, you will lose your SUP. And here is the timeframe within which we're gonna test that. That's what we've done in the past. And what can we do about it, about enforcement? The town board has to take action to make sure things are enforced, otherwise the law means nothing. I understand that, Doc.
I'm, I'm very clear on what Butch told me. He said that the way that it's worded currently. That it would only apply to two apartments and it would only relate to transient use. The way that it's.
How do you see that being enforced?
The, the.
How?
It doesn't make any sense because the wording does not equal what he said. So there is no further clarity that this board needs I, from Butch because it is illegal.
That's the board's determination, not yours.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Um. What could he possibly say? You know, I mean, th- this is what he told me.
But we, we made our decision what we're gonna do. I, I don't, can't get involved with what you told you or anything else, okay? This board has made a decision to get a clarification on the use and that's where we're gonna go. So we're, we're gonna. As, as Judy said, we're going to hold a public hearing open to the call of the chair.
Um, I hear that as a motion with seconds. Were there being in a month? Everybody?
On favor? Hey, okay.
When, when are being of a meeting?
It's, it's open to the call of the chair.
Of course, I mean.
We will put it on the agenda and notify the contiguous.
No, um, it, it goes on agenda. Continuous doesn't have to be notified when it resets. Keep your eyes open on the agenda. When the board gets the information they need, they will reconvene. The public has been heard at this meeting.
I'm sorry, I, I. I'm here on the Zoom. I was just wondering if I could speak. I didn't, no one was a good time to.
Yeah, Jonas, I'm sorry, yeah. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure I was allowed to unmute myself, so um, I'm Jonas Tellson. I, I live next door. I have been there since uh nineteen eighty nine. So I'm probably the oldest person on the block there now, even though I'm probably the youngest person, but I've been there longest uh since I was three. Um, I uh, I, I guess I, I share some of the confusion that's going on and I'm, I'm glad that the board is uh picking up on some of that. And I, I guess my, my one question, I guess, is th- this, this, this request for clarity from Butch. Is that gonna be then put back into the application so that we see Butch's comments reflected there? Cause I think Eileen's concern is, if we get clarification from Butch and the application remains the way it is, there is. There is still that unclarity of just having had that conversation to clarify doubts that's, that are not clear on the original application. Does that need to be resubmitted with these, these things explained?
That's my. That, that, that it has to be resubmitted with.
Yeah, that, that's my question.
That reflects the actual law that we have.
It, it's pending now. You're asking Butch to rework, I mean, you're, you're asking for distinction. You're asking for.
And once we know.
So technically, yes, there will.
One legal category the applicant is trying to fit into. Then we can say, okay, that means you can do these things and you can't do these other things.
We do, there are, there's been many times we refer to the CEO with further questions. That's what's happening.
I see. Uh, yeah, well, no, cause I, I guess I'm just wondering, so then, I mean, it, once those, those are clarified, which I'm hoping. Uh, explains what this, the actual need for this change of status is. Uh, that's, that's not reflected in the original application, nor are those kind of questions about how many units or what. So then in the end, if then that gets stamped as the approval for the, like, where is the language then reflect these, the, the clarification? Is that, is that gonna be reflected in the actual approval for the permit?
It will be, but the site plan now shows the apartments that he's suggesting to do for B and B. So there is a site plan attached to this. Just, yes. But right now, the board is asking the CEO for clarification of his referrals. Right?
Gotcha.
Simple as we can get it.
And what use the applicant is asking to make, that is legal.
Right.
Because he shouldn't affirm us for a use that isn't legal.
Right.
Go ahead, latch the code, then it has to be corrected. And then the question becomes, what can you do under that category, Mr. Applicant? And we can set limits on the things that can be done that follow the law.
Yes.
And may I ask just one more question, just as um for the board, cause I'm not clear on this part. These special use permits, do they um, are they passed down through, if the owners change? Or it's for a specific set of circumstances during the ownership of this building? Like, if Leo was to sell it, does that permit go to the next owner?
It's up to the board. We can put whatever conditions we want on a special use permit.
I see. Okay, well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry I missed you, Jonas.
Oh, no, it's okay. I didn't pipe up because I wasn't sure if I was allowed to, so it's gonna keep quiet now.
It's good that you did. Is there anybody else out there? I see one other person, but.
No, that was it. That was it. Oh, one more.
I just miss one. Request. That.
Name.
John Allen. The uh call of the chair. Could you have the secretary? Uh, notify all the contiguous owners when you.
Typically, it's.
I know typically and I understand.
Got it.
And I understand as a courtesy to the, to the contiguous owners, could you please notify us?
And I will second that. That's what should be done, the notification.
Thank you.
All right, John. We'll do that.
Okay, done.
You said that the public hearing will remain open, but that there won't be any more public comments.
No, 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 no.
Well, when we, when we reconvene in the public hearing and the public is, is.
Okay.
That's the whole point.
Yeah, no, I thought, okay.
Therefore, there must be notification.
Right, okay.
In order for the public to attend.
Right, so I'm just trying to understand, I, I have to say, you know, that's a lot to you, this is very complicated. Um, as well as um what the gentleman uses are, so I don't. I think Butch can tell him where it's allowed, but I think he needs to tell you and Butch what he's actually doing there or wants to be doing now. I think that that's really important.
And some of the things he may want to do may not be permitted.
Right, I mean, and you don't know that yet, so that's the investigation I'm reviewing.
Okay, so.
Tiny question. Have you on the board looked online at the site that advertises this? I would ask that the board go online to see what is being advertised.
What's the name of the?
Karma. Spa.
Karma Spa.
I, I think that adds to the company.
Well, it. Should give us a better sense of the uses that are intended.
We can attach that for the lunch. Okay.
Okay, all right, I'll, I guess that you heard what we're gonna do. We'll give you a notification when we go back again.
Time to rise here.
Tell me your name, please.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Here we have a sketch plan review. This is Michael Stark and colleague M Stark with special use. I mean, it's playing for take number twenty three. Uh, one zero eight oh. This is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application. Of a twenty seven point two eight acre lot into two parcels of twenty four point two acres and three acres. In the archery zoning district located at thirty five thirty seven Valley View Way in Lake Hill. So.
I managed not to get this on, stop, right? Yes, three acre parcel for my son and his fiancee. I just wanna have grandchildren up the road. I'm not serving anybody coffee or dinner, so. And I, and I work in this town, so I abide by the rules.
Those two things are not.
It's not that long. Homicide goes a long way in my book.
Let me, let me make this real simple. For us to approve a, a new lot, we need two things, access and for the help to prove. And I looked at your plans.
Which I should have that, the septic's been all done.
Working on it.
Yeah, they're working on that and the uh, you mean for the roadway, right?
Just of the access, access.
How, how are you gonna get into the lot?
Oh, the, the, actually the roads, maybe.
Right, I saw that, but that's the only two things.
That's, it's in the right spot, actually, because I actually talked to Scott Bones till a while back before I even did anything, you know, so.
Know how I managed not to.
So our next step is uh, we have to have a site visit. It's a standard procedure for a subdivision, so uh. I'll volunteer since I'm real familiar with the subdivision. So uh.
Oh, B and Bs, none of that stuff, right?
So when Peter has five minutes, he'll take a road out. So if you see his face on your camera, don't worry.
All right, so I'll stop by and take a look and then you'll get scheduled for a public hearing.
All right, so that's done. I'll, I'll give you Paul or I'll email Collette and we'll schedule a public hearing.
All right.
Probably no matter.
It was easy.
And I will get the parcels on here so we can actually look at the.
Yeah, I think your map was pretty.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Excuse me? How come you're all gray now? Cause I still have my hair.
There is a man.
How's that? Well, I'm fifty six now, but.
Yeah, I am.
You know. But uh.
Thanks, Mike.
It's only a color. I hear you. All right.
All right.
Thank you. I hope I made your night.
This thing does not want to be made, so I'm gonna shut it down.
Okay. We have another sketch plan review. Hello?
Hello.
Hopefully, this is an easy one.
Well, we're gonna see. This is Chief Ryan. This is a sketch plan review of a wetlands water course permit application for cleanup and restoration of a disturbed regulated area in the R five zoning district located at thirty-four Van de Bogers Road in Woodstock. Tell the board what's going on.
Yes, so um I purchased this property with the house on it to twelve acres. It has quite a bit of wetlands, as you can see. There's a driveway that comes in to sort the house.
Across the wetlands?
It's existing, yeah. Um, actually, it's still mainly the property, but nothing changed. Didn't make it wider or anything. There's a pipe that crawls there. There's a pond on the property. Uh, so there's two pieces to this, to this project. There's an, an old block debris, C M U debris that was discovered on the property. The building department asked them to clean it up.
And all the what?
Like a C M U, whoever built the house. So basically, um, I believe this is what probably what it came from. When they finished the house, they probably just put the leftover material in that corner. Again, client just bought this recently. This thing was discovered. The building department told him, even though it was in him, you still have to clean it up. You still have to take it out of there. Which he plans to do it, but here's the wetlands. If you do the hundred foot buffer around it, we're basically in the buffer. He needs to be able to operate to do that. The other thing he did is he went around next to the pond. Uh, there's a nice area there that he thought he can sit, you know, enjoy that. So they went in and they did some clearing of vegetation. And the building department said, hold on a second. Well, now we just wanna restore, so we're here to do this in like a twofold in one, in one permit thing. We need to clean the the, the construction debris from there. And he's just wants to, you know, plant this again, seed it all, mulch it and just.
With?
You know, seed and mulch, that's what he's gonna do.
With what?
Um, just grass.
See, that doesn't restore wetland.
It's not wetland. The wetlands are over there. He's just in the box.
Well, what was the vegetation that was there?
It was nothing but just weed and, you know, just.
See, there are a lot of people who think that, that, that natural wetlands are just weed.
No, we had um, Mike Nowicki go out a month ago, a little bit over a month ago, and kinda like to make sure it's not wetland. And he did confirm that it is not. It's actually a high elevation from the wetlands too, so it's definitely not a wetland. We have that determination on it before we even come to here. So we did update that. It's not like we used any old, the old mapping that, I mean, this wetland has been delineated many times over the years. Actually, we did this survey and I know, I can't remember if it was twenty-twelve or back in the days, they did dedicate, you know, they went and marked all that. And we just had them go out again to make sure that we're still within the same mark.
All right, now I'm looking actually at the property on my map.
So, okay.
And I think I'm seeing the area you're talking about. I'm going to bring this up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can, I can point out.
Okay, so what you can see here, this is wetlands. And wetland, that's your pond.
That's my map, right, yeah.
And this is all of the buffers.
Yes, we're basically.
And there are some streams coming off of those that would have narrow, like thirty foot.
We're, we're basically in the buffer.
Your houses, this is that.
No, no, the, the area that's being restored is to the, if north is up, it will be to the east of that area of the pond.
This is the area.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn off some of the layers so it's a little bit easier to see.
Yeah, right there. Even you can see from the area that it was, it was clear before. There's no trees or anything.
I see. So almost anything you do to it is gonna make it better?
Well, that's the point. And he's not looking to, I mean, it's just a.
It was a field you wanna make into a lawn.
Oh, we, I mean, picnic table, enjoy the pond. I mean, it is a feature of the property. I don't know. He's not going to build anything on it or anything. It's just a matter of, of really, it's a nice, I mean, you can walk, there's a footpath that already exists here. That you can just walk in and sit there. It's a, an old, you know, like a small boat that has flipped upside down. Yeah, I think the previous owner maybe just put it in there. I'm not sure what they use the pond for, but again.
So you are.
We just need a permission to be able to build the bomb and ask him to come in and get a permit so he can go in.
But it's, it's not your property. You are contractor.
I'm the engineer that. What happened is that. Yes, he's the owner's online, but what we did is basically we went and physically shot the disturbed area so we can show this limitation and how much we're talking about.
Yeah. Well, I have concerns about putting lawns in places where there ought to be natural vegetation, but lawns are an invasive species. And in order to maintain them in any form that looks like lawn, you end up using chemicals and fertilizers. And I would like to see something done with that that is actually restoring the wetland buffer.
I, yes, but I mean, I'm not sure, um, I mean, what prevents him from really, you know, being able to enjoy sitting by the pond on a you know, lawn area. I'm not sure.
What's, what's the acreage that's?
The entire, everything, this area plus that is gonna be about twenty thousand square feet, so it's a white point four of an acre, something like that. Out of a pool.
I don't see any reason why they couldn't have some area that they could set aside as kind of recreational space without having the whole thing be in grass.
But, you know, originally, I'm sure where the pond is was wet once.
Right.
When they dug the pond, it's wet. That's what always happens. That's how most ponds are created. But um.
But this is uphill, just geography wise, this is on a higher flat.
Oh, there's two different issues here. I mean, I can turn on the, I don't, I don't have a two foot contour on.
We, we did shoot it, actually, and here's the elevation five hundred, that's five oh two, this is five hundred, and it goes down to four ninety-seven. It keeps going down left.
So if I had a two foot contour, I'd be able to see.
Yes.
Yeah, you've got, I understand.
So.
Well, what I am asking you to consider, I'm asking the owner to consider, is delineating an area that they could use for enjoyment that could be lawn, but not the whole thing. And do other things that are native land, native landscape for that kind of setting.
Oh, separate is online. I don't know if he can.
May I, may I comment on this?
Absolutely.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate you staying uh so late. So just for clarity, um that area was there, as you can see from the satellite photos, and you can go back more than fifteen years. Nothing was changed, so all I wanted to do is clear up um, uh, very, very gentle because there was just weeds. It, it looked extraordinarily rough. And if I compared it with all the pictures that I've seen, the real estate, et cetera, nothing has changed. Nothing is changing in terms of the feature, so. I don't want to, how can I put it? I just wanna put that behind. It looks beautiful as it is. Even if we don't do anything to it, natural, just natural vegetation, uh, you know, that grows up in, in just a few weeks. So nothing, um, you know, I was very surprised. I looked at the map where the boundaries are, the wetland, I thought. Not doing anything funky, and then this issue came up, so. You know, there's, there's, there's nothing that I would change with respect to the contour, absolutely nothing.
Okay, um, I think we need to do a site visit. And who would like to volunteer to go out and take a look at this?
How accessible is it from the point of view of me?
Looks like you can drive very close to it.
It does, it does. Okay, well, then I, well, I'll be gone next week, but after that.
All right, kick up. You can do it too.
I mean, you understand what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
So what I'd like to suggest is, is uh.
One, one final comment. What I would love is, uh, cause we looked at ways, there's several ways in which we could treat it. One is do nothing. Two, clean it up. All I need is, what is your, you know, your instruction for me to comply? Actually, I don't wanna do anything. It's beautiful as it is. By the time I just. I had just moved, so I didn't know all the, all the intricacies. And my second and last point is can we also get the, the approval to remove the debris that we discovered?
That is part of this, yes.
Yeah, that I think.
The board, the board's gonna do a site visit. So right now, the, the board, the, a few members are gonna go out and do a site visit, so. Then we're kinda on hold, all right?
Here's what I suggest. We do a site visit. And I would like to get consult with D E C as to how they suggest repairing a disturbed buffer.
I mean, the fact that it's been there fifteen years doesn't mean it shouldn't be remediated.
Right.
The question is, what's the best way to remediate it? So that it will be a
Have you been in touch with D E C?
Part of the, of the ecosystem.
I think that once, once you visit, you'll be convinced. Once you visit the property, you'll be convinced that it's.
Actually, not even a federal, the federal wetlands don't even have that.
No, it doesn't have to be. It does not need to be a C wetland for them to be able to give us good advice.
I understand, I know what she's saying and I have to contact.
Contact.
And I didn't see the need to either federally or statewide. There's no, it's, I'm actually contacting the the, the body that put that law in.
Ingrid Heckel is a, is a really expert biologist, and she knows this kind of, she knows Woodstock. And she knows this kind of land. Ingrid Heckel, she works with D E C.
Hudson River, River Estuary, I think it's her actual.
Yeah. We could, we could ask the W E C, but I don't know that they're gonna have the expertise to really advise the homeowner on the best way to deal with that.
I think once you visit the property.
What about, wait, 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 I have an idea. Mike Nowicki was out there. We've worked with him. We know him. Do we ask Qatar? I can email Mike Nowicki to write this up.
He's a wetland delineator, just like I am. What I'm talking about is restoration, and that's a whole different.
Restoration is a different question.
So now, this is a gated property. So if I'm just asked that, if you're going to go a site visit, you might wanna give a date or two between you and homeowner, so he should be able to, you can get through the gates, that's all.
Done.
I don't know if you're local or not. I'm just saying that when they do wanna do a site visit, they might wanna coordinate with you so you can have access to the property.
They, yeah, they can come anytime. I can give a code remotely. You can, you're welcome to come, but the sooner the better, because I'd love to, you know, enjoy the, the fall and.
Yeah. I will be back October second. So anytime.
Just pick a date and just, we just need to know that you can have access to it.
Tomorrow. You'll be convinced, by the time you walk there, you'll be convinced.
Somebody else and not me. So, after the site visit is held, you guys will just come back and talk to the planning board, you know?
Well, well, yeah, we'll just get. He's just trying to finish it before the snow.
A wetlands water course permit does require an S G P and it will require a public hearing, so.
Okay, just.
So probably November will be the first meeting you get back, just so you know.
November.
This is the last meeting in September, yes.
And then your code's down, sure.
Yes.
Which doesn't mean we can't do the, the site.
No, no, you can do the site visit, absolutely, but just meeting wise, yes. Thank you.
All right, well, just curious, one last question, because it's a, I mean, I wasn't sure, especially this point, the project is small. Sure, so board cannot waive a public hearing or something like that if it's a small area of work. Just trying to cut a moment out of the process.
So, no, we have to go through the, in order to issue a wetlands water course permit.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. I'll be in touch.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next thing we have is the response to the scenic overlay documents, which I guess you've all seen.
And I was actually at the meeting.
So, um, basically what we're doing is uh saying we review it. And uh we're okay with the language.
There doesn't seem to be many changes.
Well, there are some changes. One of them is Judy's suggestion is that not everything above twelve hundred feet.
Yes, that word.
No, everything above twelve hundred feet is.
No, I mean.
But it doesn't mean that the whole property is covered.
And the other big change.
Still have the rule that says if you're doing any kind of development above twelve hundred feet, you're, you're covered.
But not below.
But not below.
And the other change is that we're gonna do drone photography of the location.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, which we started to implement before.
Yeah. So other than that.
So I had prepared a memo just basically stating that. I will send that off tomorrow morning to Laura in the zoning revision committee. So John.
Yes.
I had canceled October nineteenth meeting, so we were down to one meeting in October. I have nothing scheduled for October fifth. You guys are off for the month of October.
Oh. That's my birthday, so I don't have.
So I will see you guys. And when you think of it, this is the last meeting in September, so it's only two meetings.
Just to go back to that scenic overlay, there was one technical thing I wanna make sure I straightened up. The old law was controversial because it said only the planning board, everything has to come to the planning board before you do anything. And the old law also said, well, if the building inspector says that it's okay, then he can permit it without coming to the planning board. That's been correct.
I don't know.
That was the biggest issue.
Well, I think we need to tell them that.
That was.
I do know the current law is the Z E O can decide all, yeah.
That's how we ended up with that. With that stimulus.
Can we look into that?
The old law said that you can't, you can't make a pass wire of six feet or do anything without getting planning board approval. But then it said, if the Z E O says it's okay.
I, I, I think we ought to look at the language again, because we need, that needs to get fixed.
That was my.
That wasn't fixed.
A quick look at it.
Do, my question to you is, do you know any contacts I can reach out to D E C?
I sure do.
So we'll talk and we'll figure something out, cause that's perfect. That's just, you know, I call D C for D E P and it takes months before I get a response.
But that's why I suggested.
That's why.
The reason I bring it up, folks, is to this the first ever reclamation
Yes.
of a wetland buffer that we've ever done.
Why I was so insistent on it.
And I can't tell you, and I agree with Judy, I can't say you just put a lawn there.
We gotta add some area for enjoyment of it, absolutely.
But the vegetation.
Should we look at the zone, the scenic overlay changes?
You guys, I don't, you don't have it down here in a copy.
So the highlights are, um yeah, forested sections of the, of Woodstock above an elevation of twelve hundred feet. Additional areas included in the scenic overlay that are below twelve hundred feet are described in section two sixty dash nine. Which advises that the locations and boundaries of said district are hereby established as shown on a zoning map, town of Woodstock.
Except that it isn't there. Because Jackie and Melissa and I looked at all the maps.
Laura actually wrote all that in the email.
Yeah, and there is nothing below twelve hundred feet, even though Ed Sanders thinks there is. There is not.
Well, it says if any part of the law falls within the scenic overlay district, the entire lot must comply with scenic overlay district.
That's the old law, early law.
That's what's highlighted, so I'm guessing that's, I, I took it as being changes.
Position that it took, and we couldn't find any. What we found was that it says if something is in more than one district, it's subject to the laws of both districts. But that's not clearly something having to do with the scenic overlay, and it doesn't make sense. What makes sense is twelve hundred feet. If the property lies across that boundary, anything that happens above that boundary is covered.
I can, I can easily, we can solve this easy. I can add to that lovely memo that I created and put, we want to ensure that all scenic overlay activity comes to the planning board.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay? How's that? With considering.
That's not the question that, that Braden was looking at.
No, 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 but that's Peter's concern.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree with it.
So I'll, I'll add that.
Change that they didn't catch and we need it.
And it may have been caught the first time around because they, they matched everything we had said.
I know, I know, but we brought it up before.
We, we, yeah, we got everything we wanted.
It should be in what they sent us, and if it's not.
Right, I can see this.
But I don't remember it.
Yeah, it's, it's the new document. Yeah, it's, it's the new document from the eleven, it says that they deleted less than twelve hundred square, twelve hundred feet.
That's.
And then. They deleted reflective, examples of highly reflective materials were deleted, as some of the examples could have been reflective.
No, I think they actually made it right, I don't think that.
I hope they corrected that.
Yeah.
It's, that's a really weird clause, remember, we had concerns on it, and then Laura came back at us. And was like, actually, it's blah and blah, so it seems backwards, but it's actually not.
Looking for.
Remember, we went back and forth with that one.
We need a classification of blah and blah.
The reflectivity of the.
Okay, the use of building materials, colors and textures designed to blend with the natural environment, and the prohibition of highly reflective materials.
Yes.
Examples of highly reflective materials were deleted. As some of the examples could have been reflective, I don't know what that means, maybe not highly, so we're not gonna have examples, we're gonna simply say. Highly reflective materials are not permitted.
Yes.
So who's gonna determine what's highly, what's not highly?
Us, we do. You.
Oh, this is dangerous territory.
But specifying examples doesn't make it any less dangerous.
Lawsuit territory.
But making, specifying examples doesn't make it any less dangerous.
As, as some people brought up, even round metal roofs can be reflective.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed. Indeed.
Anyway.
End your meeting, guys.
You have to be somewhere.
Motion to adjourn.
Find in there about everything having to come.
Thanks, James.